Perfect, thank you. All right, well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking time to attend the Residential Parking Permit Rules and Regulations Public Hearing. Really, we really appreciate you taking the time to meet with us today. The assumption is that those in attendance have reviewed the Residential Parking Permit Rules and Regulations and the associated entrance requirements. So the short public presentation will not include an overview, rather, we will provide a project timeline and milestones information to describe how the recommendations and the content of the rules and regulations and entrance requirements were developed. This is a public hearing.
Sorry.
Scott, you just.
There we go, unmute. So yeah, real quick, before we get started, I thought the project team introductions would be helpful, so you know who is here and who is facilitating the meeting. So I'll start, I'm Scott Burton, I'm a Principal Transportation Planner with the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. I'm the Project Manager for this effort, and I will turn it over to Jess and Rachel, so they can introduce themselves.
Hello, everybody, I'm Jessica Hernandez, and I work for Consoor, and I am a transportation planner and supporting Scott on the rules and regulations update.
And I'm Rachel Roberts, I am also with Consoor, I'm a transportation planner and helping support Scott and Jess.
Yep, thank you. So with that, we can go ahead and jump in. So public hearing format, so this is a public hearing, it is being recorded. Staff will not be addressing questions during this hearing, this is your time. Rather, a FAQ will be posted to the project website. If you requested speaking time, you will be given two minutes. Please remain on mute until your name is called, and then a timer will be visible. If there's time after registered speakers and you did not request time, please raise your hand, so we can add your name to the speaker list. At that point, speaking time would will be based on the number of participants requesting to speak and time remaining. Questions can also be asked through the Zoom chat feature, and those will be incorporated into the FAQ as well. This public hearing will conclude when no more participants wish to speak, or at 12:30, whichever comes first. So project timeline and milestone, so this project began in January of 2021. It started with two, with an initial city council briefing, we briefed the individual members. That was followed by assembling a stakeholder working group, we had two stakeholder working group meetings in 2021, and two internal project management team meetings. We then began to draft the RPP Residential Parking Permit Framework and the initial recommendations. We then created an RPP survey that was sent to permit holders. In 2022, we summarized survey results and incorporated the input. We then began to draft the rules and regulations. We held additional stakeholder working group and project management tent, management team meetings and conducted some targeted outreach. We presented the recommendations to city council members, to the inner neighborhood cooperation, and the Policy Review Committee. The Policy Review Committee, better known as the PRC, is a committee organized by the mayor's office, in case you're curious. In 2023, we refined the rules and regulations and the entrance requirements. We updated our stakeholder working group, the PMT, permit holders, city council, registered neighborhood organizations, and the inner neighborhood cooperation. Today, we're holding the public hearing, and then following the public hearing, we will work to finalize the rules and regulations and formally adopt the document. With that, I'm going to stop sharing and turn it back over to Jess.
Thanks, Scott. So now, we are going to, as Scott said, let everybody that has signed up through the website to speak, I will run through that list first, and then, after that, we'll let people that are in attendance that raise their hands speak as well. And so for the people that have signed up, we're going to start off with two minutes per person, as Scott also mentioned, and the first person on our list, and sorry if I mispronounce anybody's names, the first person on our list is Bill Aligarh. Bill, are you here? Okay, I will move to the second person, it is Isaac Buchard. The third person is Bradley Cameron. Bradley, are you here? Moving down the list, Fran Cosby. Tim David. Don Fodness. Jay Fraz. Jenny Fuhr. Lenny Jonas. Joel Judd.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thanks, Joel. Okay, we'll go ahead and start your two-minute timer now.
Oh, no, I don't have anything to say.
Oh, you don't have anything to say? Okay, thank you. Moving to the next person on the list, Louis Kaufman. Gregory Lyons. Ned Mayer.
I do think Ned is here.
I'm here.
There we go.
Great. Okay, Ned, we'll go ahead and start your two-minute timer.
Thank you. You can hear me okay? Good. First, I'll just say that the group has been very easy to work with. Well, I live on Seventeenth Street between Boulder and Erie Streets, and we have parking permits. And my question is this. About a month ago, I noticed that up in our prescribed parking permit area, a lift structure went in with scooters and bikes. And, I mean, that's fine, I mean, that has to happen in a community like ours, but we were never notified about it. And we were never asked our input on it. And I'm just wondering if this is the normal, the way things work now. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ned, and just to reiterate, we are taking, you know, we're taking people's speaking points, and we will be placing an FAQ later with responses that are applicable. Yeah, so thank you, Ned. Okay, so next person on the list is Rhonda Martin. Stacy Orin. Jonathan Pira, are you, I did see Jonathan on.
Yes, hey.
Great, Jonathan, um, do you, do you want to speak today?
Yes.
Sorry, I'd already started.
Oh, all right, timer's up, okay. Hey, all, Jonathan Pira, I was a member of the work group, the strategic working group that talks about this. Wanted to register a few concerns or remaining complaints with the existing rules and regulations as they sit, as we need approval here. Primarily much, which is that a core goal of the work group and this initiative overall, and our adopted plans, was to no longer discriminate against persons in multifamily buildings. In the rules and regulations as we see them today, we will still see continued discrimination against folks in multifamily buildings because of the block zone eligibility not being eligible for units above 20 units, an area zone above 21 to 50 units. We'll still see cases where we might have a single-family home with a garage with two spots and a driveway with four spots being eligible for two street permits, while someone in an older Capitol Hill apartment right across the street with no off-street parking cannot get a street permit. Work group did push back on this at the end of the last, and end of the meetings when we first saw this, and I saw no changes to the rules after that. I know it was pretty strong consensus from the work group that we didn't want to see this continued discrimination against multifamily buildings. Another issue I'm seeing here is we're saying that any building receiving, receiving exemption or reduction from minimum parking requirements is excluded from getting permits. This is in direct conflict with our blueprint, our comprehensive plan, and our strategic transportation plan guidance to encourage more pedestrian-friendly and low-automotive building forms. In all of these cases, these buildings are providing an agreed-upon community benefit already, such as saving trees or saving historic structure or something along those lines, and yet we're going to say that they can't get street permits, which might lead developers to more often say, I'm going to destroy the trees here instead of take the reduction because my residents won't be able to get street permits. Few other things I'll submit by writing, because I see my time is up, but thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Next on our list is Tom Robbins. Patrick Shilken.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me, sorry, I was, I am resident, have been a longtime resident of Park Hill, have seen a lot of changes, we began our parking registration in 2014. The idea that I supported very long time ago was the removal of the large and junker vehicles off our streets. We fought a long and hard battle with the, then at that time, representative of our neighborhood, Diane, to get, and I still want to support that. The fact that I may have parking on my land to accommodate more vehicles was something that we had considered, but still really do support each resident still having two parking spaces. As Denver begins to grow up and down the Colfax Quarter, I am hoping that we are able to continue to support and provide that, you know, continuing to clean up the streets. But, you know, again, any relaxing of those rules, as we have seen, regardless of your station in life, people will take advantage of it, and I think that we need continued enforcement of this. And hopefully, we can come to a good resolution of it. That's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Patrick. Julie Schwartz. Carla Schenkel. Anthony Thompson.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay, great.
I live on Seventeenth Street between Boulder and Erie myself, I've been here for a long time. And parking is a very big concern to all of us. I have not read your entire plan yet, but I would hope that it would cover some of these areas, you know, high-impact parking times, construction workers. We do not have driveways in our homes, we're kind of landlocked here now. And we, at this point, get one parking pass, I get two, because I don't have a car that I own, but my brother comes a lot, and I don't know if that's going to impact me because it kind of limits me who can come visit me, how long they can stay. And I was wondering if this involves any kind of permits, like you see outside of Cherry Creek by the shopping area, where you absolutely cannot park in front of these people's house without some other kind of permit. And I was just concerned because the businesses have grown in this low-high area to the point where there are certain times you can't leave your house because you'll never get to park there again, so. That's, those are some of my questions, and thanks for taking my call.
Thanks, Anthony. Elaine Walsh. Elizabeth Ward. Shelby Young.
Hi, I'm here, thank you. And I would like to say something.
Okay, go ahead, we'll start the timer.
Okay, thanks. Um, I have been to the web building to talk to parking about this, but I only get one guest pass, and I don't know, my neighbor gets three, I don't understand the difference if it has to do with the amount of passes that, that they have residential passes, so anyway. My neighbor and I, we live in the Regis area, and we went door-to-door to get the parking permits because it was really hard to park in front of your house, so I do appreciate the guest pass, or the parking passes, but it's a problem. One suggestion also that I was going to bring up is I sometimes have people living with me short-term, so it might be one month, might be two months, three months. And I would like the opportunity for them to be able to register their license plate for short-term periods as opposed to having to just use the hang tag, so if there's the possibility of doing that, so that, like, the hang tag is so inconvenient because it gets lost, it gets taken. You know, it's a physical thing, if we can do the registering the license plates, like what we do for the residential passes, that would be great. So that, those were the suggestions and comments that I had, and I think that that's about it.
Thanks, Shelby. Okay, that was the end of people, of the list of people who have signed up, and so we've been capturing people that have been posting in the chat or have raised their hand. Feel free at this point now to go ahead and raise your hand, we have four people that we have noted, so you can also wait till those four talk and then raise your hand, so. I'm going to start with, and this is in order of how we, how we receive them, Diane Balkan.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I live in Cherry Creek North, and there's a couple of comments I want to make. I think that the way they've crafted the placards, hanging placards, is fundamentally unfair. They reduced it from two to one, and that causes a hardship for a number of people. A lot of people use their garages for storage or, you know, gyms or other reasons, and it's unfair to count them as a parking space, so if you have a luncheon or dinner party for more than one person, you are in trouble because you only have one parking placard, that's number one, so I'd like to see it increased back to two. And there's a way to control the, no abuse because they're listed what block you can park in. Number two, I just purchased a new car, well, a car new to me, and there was no way to register the temporary license plate, even though it's registered to me at my address. And the state is taking an enormous amount of time getting the titles ready so that the car can be fully registered. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Thanks, Diane. Next is Michael Blake.
Hi there, thanks for the opportunity to speak, my name is Michael Blake, and I'm here generally in support of the proposed update of the rules and regs pertaining to the administration of the RPP program. I live at 2650 West Frontview Crescent Drive in the Jefferson Park neighborhood. And I've lived in my home for almost 13 years, but unlike some of the others on this call, I haven't been able to receive the benefits of the RPP program since the current version only supports really single-family homes and smaller buildings. Our building has 40 units, which exceeds, I think, the current limit of eight. So I'm really excited that the city is finally updating this program and is trying to make it fair and equitable for all residents in the program. And I'd just like to mention too that the Jefferson Park neighborhood is really in dire need of an update to our curbside access plan. The current plan here, I think, is maybe almost 40 years old and really doesn't reflect the current situation in our neighborhood. And then lastly, I would just say, I really do support adding the idea of adding some modest permit fees beginning in 2024. I didn't realize how expensive this program is for the city to manage, and I think it's totally fair for the city to be able to collect permit fees to offset the cost of administering the program. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Michael. Next up is David Sprouse. Oh, David, hang on one second, go ahead and unmute yourself, and then we'll start the timer. Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
So I'm David Sprouse, I live in University Park area, two blocks from the University of Denver. So unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to review your proposal, or even find it for that matter. But one of my big concerns, it was, I've been here 25 years, one of my big concerns is that we don't lose our one-hour parking in our particular block because we're two blocks from the university, their classes, their courses, their night courses are an hour and a half long, so when we had two-hour parking, we could still never park in front of our own homes. So that's one of the issues, we want to try to hopefully maintain what's currently there. Uh, we do have a memorandum of understanding with the University of Denver regarding the, those parking restrictions that have been in place for at least 10 years. And so we want to do that, and then as far as managing fees, I actually agree with that, my neighbors don't necessarily, but I agree with the managing fees, however, when there are issues with people parking, we've had a lot of construction recently, so there hasn't been parking for a couple of years due to that, but there doesn't seem to be any resource to, to manage the parking. So when we call somebody, the parking, uh, I'm going to call them parking police for now, sorry if that's a little bit discriminatory, for a better term. When we call for manager parking, when our neighbors call for manager parking, no one shows up till the next day or two days later, and then it's not an issue. So that's one thing, if we have managing fees, we also need to have support within the, within the city to accommodate more folks that can, that can patrol the streets when needed. I don't think, I really don't think we need to all the time, but anyway. That looks like that's about what I, all I had from this conversation, so that's my two minutes.
Thank you, David. Next is Paul Frigoso.
Hi, yes, you got the name right.
Okay.
I just like to add, I, I support the, the current situation that's being proposed and all. But I would like to add that maybe since you're working with the same division with the garbage collection, the recycle, and the compost, that there be a, maybe working with them, they can start putting a limit that those cans need to be removed within 24 hours of the pickup date because that's really restricting a lot of parking in certain areas. I live in the Sloane's Lake, Lake area, and you know, people leave their cans out for days at a time, and it really does impact the ability to park. And then a side benefit to that would be just the aesthetics, keeping the neighborhood looking decent, so that's all I had to put in.
Thanks, Paul. Next is Brooke Brown.
Hi, everybody, I'm Brooke. I live in Capitol Hill near Ninth and Logan, and I apologize, I'll just say that I have not read the plan, so I'm sorry if this becomes a moot point. But I had corresponded within the last couple of years quite a bit with somebody at the city, there had been a proposal on the table at some point to carve out a little piece of the neighborhood where we live to get rid of all parking restrictions. So I don't know if that is still on the table, but the concern that I had is that we are in a single-family house and are surrounded by apartment buildings, high-rises, and two schools, and lots of commercial space. And I would just say that I wonder with the amount of space that is actually dedicated to parking with high-rise buildings, if there were a disincentive for folks to pay monthly fees to pay, to park in those lots, what, just how that might impact the street parking, and then just excess capacity that ends up being on those private lots, so again, sorry if it's already, there's something else in the plan that's different, but that was what was on my mind, thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. Steven Schuman. Oh, Steven, you need to unmute.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to make a comment. Likewise, I have not had a chance to read the plan, had some unfortunate family issues going on right now. I have lived in the Regis neighborhood for 30 years. On 2007, we residential parking permits were implemented in my neighborhood, and at the time, they were issued in accordance with the zoning, which is one vehicle per licensed driver plus one additional. In 2018, when I replaced a vehicle in my household, I received notification with my application rejected that I now fell under, under the new plans. So we own three vehicles, but we can only receive two residential parking permits, not guest permits, but residential parking permits. I was never notified by the city as to the change. And my question is, is why were the those existing permit holders not grandfathered? And another issue that we have in the Regis neighborhood is that many homes are owned by investors who rent them out on the street, is convert their backyards into parking lots. Some homes have as many as four or five vehicles parked in the backyard because the residents there are unable to park on the street without receiving a ticket. That's all the comments I have, thank you.
Thanks, Steven. Um, this is our last sign-up, and it is Shannon Foraker. Shannon?
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me a comment as well. I live in the 1980 block of South Cherry Street. Well, 1900 block, and I want to make sure that we, I live right across from the bridge that goes to the light rail station. There are 12 units that in this quote-unquote complex, but they're all individual addresses owned by individual people. And I just want to make sure that we do not lose our parking permit status because people will park at the light rail, and we will never get to park in our houses because we only have one garage spot, and some houses have two, three people living in them. So I want, that's the first thing, is that I want to make sure that, because we fought really hard to get restricted parking, and it's two-hour parking, which is fine with residents accepted, obviously. And I want to reiterate what David said, that if we're going to pay fees, there needs to be some patrolling because I have cars parked in front of my house nonstop that are not permitted at all, yet they never get tickets. So, or, or move, for that matter, I've called parking enforcement, and you know, it takes them forever to get out there. I had an abandoned vehicle parked in front of my house for a month and a half, and it turned out it was a stolen truck, so, but it took them three weeks to get out to help with that, so I agree with David that we, if we're going to pay fees now, that there needs to actually be some enforcement. I know you guys don't have all the resources in the world, but, you know, at least make it over to every area once a week or something. So that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. It looks like Audie Paz, is that? Yeah, so, and I'm sorry if I'm saying your name wrong. Audie, you just signed up? Audie? We can't, I'm sorry, we can't hear you, I see that you're not muted, though.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Now we can, okay, we'll go ahead and start now.
Okay, thank you, I am a longtime.
Okay, thank you. I am a longtime Denver resident of North Denver, off of 19th and Hooker Street, which is just in the Mile High Stadium area. And we've dealt a lot with the parking issue, obviously, because of football games and such. And now with the increased density of all of the condominiums that are being built, I have to agree with, I did not get the person's name who spoke a little earlier, who did mention that, you know, all of these properties that have two-car garages are full of stuff, and so all of the street parking is very limited. And so to have the residential parking permits for guests is very important for us, just to keep the peace, I guess you would say, so that we can have a couple of guests actually at our residence visiting. And I also have to agree that we have a lot of, with renters in the area of the old properties that are not new condominiums, we have a lot of people that just get the parking permits and then keep them permanently in their car and, like, never move. There are actually renters who live in the area. They don't register their vehicles properly, and so this kind of mucks up the system. So if there's a way to change that or make it better, I'm all for that. But I definitely think that especially in the area near Mile High Stadium, we need to continue subtype of monitored program that I think permanent residents who actually live in the neighborhood can and would be willing to contribute monetarily to it each year to make sure it's properly, properly monitored. So, thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have Christina Maxwell.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Okay, we'll start your timer now.
Okay, I just want to make a comment. I live in the Spear neighborhood, and the city implemented our parking permits when the new Country Club Towers went up. And it has made an absolutely tremendous difference to our neighborhood. It is night and day, so much more peaceful, even though we have, besides just the Country Club Towers, we have a lot of other multifamily around. And it's just made a tremendous difference. I'm very, just very hopeful that you're not going to get rid of the program. So that's all, that's, I just wanted to put my two cents in, and I know several of my neighbors would agree with that. It's, it's just made a huge difference. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is everybody who either signed up or raised their hand. I think I'll put one more call out to see if anybody else is interested. And feel free, if you're having trouble with the chat or the hand raise, you can also just let us know now.
Jessica, I forgot to say one thing. Can I add to what I said already, or is that not allowed?
Yeah, I think that's fine. We have a little bit of time left.
The one suggestion that, well, first of all, I love the parking permit system as well because it really allows us to be able to park in front of our house, whereas before driveways were blocked, et cetera. But with that short-term parking permit suggestion that I had, I feel like right now the problem with, if I have anybody living with me for one to two or three months, whatever, they can't get registered because they don't get like an Xfinity bill, an electric bill or anything like that in their name with the address, and their license doesn't have my address on it. So it's a problem because they have to use a guest pass. Does that make sense? So I just don't know what to do about that. And that was the last part that I wanted to add.
Great, thank you. So I think a good final note is Michael Blake asked in the chat, what is the next step in the process after this meeting? And so, Scott, if you don't mind just letting everybody know.
Sure, sure. Thank you. And yeah, great comments and questions. Thank you, everyone. So yeah, in terms of next steps, we will be evaluating all the feedback we've received via email over the last, I'll call it, six weeks, and then reviewing feedback and questions received today. We will create that FAQ. We will, we will be working to adopt the rules and regs. And then we will place updates on our website. So check back there. We hopefully will have the FAQ up at some point next week or the following week, but at some point soon. And then we'll be posting updates on the website as well in terms of when this document gets approved and that kind of thing.
We'll post the website. Yeah, I was just going to say, Rachel, do you mind posting that one more time?
Yep, thank you, Rachel. Yeah, and that's your best resource for updates.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Yep, thanks so much, everyone. Have a great weekend. Bye.